I can't.
Yeah. Yeah, so far it seems like never.
Hi there.
Are we good? Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, call the planning commission meeting regular session to order for Wednesday, May first, two thousand twenty-four. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Franze.
Here.
Commissioner McGurran.
Here.
Commissioner Belzer.
Here.
Commissioner Hoyt.
Here.
Commissioner Block.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Carleberg. Commissioner Fishman.
Here.
And Chairman Coleman.
Here.
We have a quorum, nine members present. Second item, approval of the agenda. I did notice that we have a revised agenda on the dais. Looks like the case twenty-eight, twenty-four has been removed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Are there any other changes to the agenda?
There are not.
Can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Block with the motion. Is there a second? Second Commissioner Carleberg. All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Against nay. Agenda is approved, nine, zero. Item three, approval of the minutes. We have three sets of minutes. The first one from the work session on March twelfth. Second is the planning commission meeting on March twenty-sixth. And the third session, the third set is the work session from April ninth. There was one, which I believe is the March twelfth, which originally in our packet, at least in my packet, only had the even pages. There was a copy that was put on the dais this evening. That includes all nineteen pages. Are there any changes or amendments to the March twelfth minutes?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hoyt.
I love getting credit for it, but I was not actually at that meeting, and I'm listed as being present.
Okay. Clerk will take the note on that. Any other changes?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McGurran.
This is March twelfth, right?
That is correct.
Page five, my name in the middle of the page. It references the first sentence, I think, Mr. Bill George's seventy-five foot tall. It says buildings. It should be building that was just, that just went up, looks, and so we should add an S to the end of the word look.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurran. Any other changes? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of them.
Commissioner Block, some of them. Commissioner Carleberg, second. All in favor of approving the planning commission work session minutes for March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Against nay. Minutes are passed, nine, zero. Up next is the minutes from the planning commission meeting on March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Are there any changes to the minutes? Any, Commissioner Block?
Just one minor. I think that the, at the bottom of the page, the comments that were attributed to you, I believe you were reporting that this had already happened at that time. It was, you said there will be instead, or it was written will be, but I think it was a reappointment of the three.
Did you guys get that one?
On the first page, at the very bottom, the last, the second to last attributed to the chairman, there was a reappointment instead of will be.
Any other changes to those minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Commissioner Block, is there a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Belzer, thank you. All in favor of approving the meeting minutes for March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Nay. Commission meeting minutes are approved, nine, zero. Brings us up to the work session meeting minutes for April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Any changes to those minutes? Commissioner Block.
I do have one. On page four, the first that's attributed to me, second sentence, I believe it should have been, I'm not sure if we shouldn't restrict that to less than seventy-five feet.
That's all I have. Any other changes to the minutes? Can I get a motion on approving the minutes?
So moved.
Commissioner, Commissioner Belzer, is there a second? Commissioner Carleberg, second. All in favor of approving, approving the planning commission work session minutes for April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. Meeting minutes are approved, nine, zero. That brings us to tonight's consent agenda, case forty-one, twenty-four. Is there any, anyone that wants to pull this from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve? Is your microphone on?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fishman?
Oh, I think Commissioner Hoyt is.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Hoyt. All in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. Consent agenda is approved, nine, zero. That brings us up to new business, case thirty-nine, twenty-four, Park Place, Exwa Bistro, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Request for approval of a tenant finish located north of one hundred and seventeenth street and east of Knoll Avenue. I believe that is Ms. Ewing. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Cameron Ewing, Planner One. This is case thirty-nine dash twenty-four, a request for approval of a final plan for a tenant finish for a Swa Bistro at one-one-five-seven-zero Ash Street. The applicant is requesting approval to alter the facade of the existing tenant suite within the Park Place development. This tenant, excuse me, this tenant suite was previously occupied by Pig and Finch Gastro Pub. The subject tenant suite is located within a three-story mixed-use building that houses multiple retail tenants along the first level. A Swa Bistro is proposing to occupy the southernmost tenant space, serving as a restaurant that serves both indoor and patio dining. The applicant is proposing the following modifications to the existing tenant facade. To replace the awning fabric on the east and southwest facades while keeping the existing frames, remove the awnings and frames on the south facade to replace with larger retractable awnings, the addition of one awning over the entrance to the restaurant on the southeast corner of the building, painting the exterior walls, and the addition of new patio furniture and planters. The applicant is proposing two paint colors from Sharon Williams, both iron ore and classical white. The primary color will be classical white with the iron ore accenting. The new fabric awnings would be Sombrella Fire System Collection in the color black. The patio tables would be by EMU with an antique black finish. The patio chairs would be from G and A Seating in the color beige brown. The patio planters would be from Wassa Tile in the color buff. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the parking, landscaping, or lighting with this application. And then moving on to staff comments, the applicant is proposing the awnings on the east and southeast elevations to be six feet, eight inches from grade. This was approved with the Pig and Finch tenant finish application that did come through in two thousand twelve. However, the Park Place tenant design guidelines require all canopies or awnings to be measured eight feet, six inches from floor level. The current existing awnings measure six-eight from floor level. These do not comply with the tenant design guidelines for a park place, and so that is in reference to stipulation number two in the staff report. And then I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the planning commission for Ms. Ewing? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Invite the applicant to come forward. Sir, welcome to the planning commission.
Hi.
Could you please state your name and your business address for the record?
Nick Ewing, Sullivan Palmer, Architects, eight-six-two-one, Johnston Drive, Merriam, Kansas, six-six, two-oh-two.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, the awning issue, they're existing frames, and we just wanted to replace the fabric on them. They were approved previously. They only project out like one foot nine, and so between the awning and the planter, there's still seven foot nine of width of sidewalk right there for people to get by. The six foot eight, that's like a minimum head height for code on interior, so it kind of needs to add on the exterior. We feel that we should be able to keep the frame, it's just to replace the fabric. So I wanted to get your thoughts.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
I would like to say if you are going to not approve it, we, that you have like an alternate suggestion, I guess. So I guess before you, you vote, if you could let us know if you're like against it or not against that, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hoyt.
I would like to hear the alternate idea.
So if you weren't going to approve it, the owner would like to just take them off completely, which make those facades all bare, because he doesn't want to have any awnings that sat high if he doesn't have to. And on those windows, it works out pretty well. On the entrance, you have like a larger overhang, so therefore having the awning up higher makes sense on that one with the new one. Same thing with the patio. You want like a higher overhang out there, too. So that's kind of what we would suggest is to approve it with us, to remove them, if you won't allow us to keep the frame. So that's that.
And just a point of clarification. So you're saying to remove all, you would remove all of the awnings, not just the ones that are six feet, eight inches?
Well, they're all at six foot, eight inches. And so the one on the south at the patio is going to be removed anyways for a higher retractable line that's above the patio space.
Okay. So you would do that one regardless?
Yes.
Okay.
But on the southwest and on the east is where we want to keep the frames. It's just to replace the fabric at those windows there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Any discussion on case number thirty-nine, twenty-four from the commission? Commissioner Block?
I guess I'd be interested from staff. It sounds like from the packet, this was an oversight, or it appears to be an oversight initially. The standards for the development are eight foot six, or I'm sorry, yes, eight foot six instead of six foot eight. And I guess what are your thoughts about either completely removing them, or should they stay and be at eight foot six?
With regard to, I, I, I think you're right. I'm not sure if it's just, you know, they got flipped or, or something. And basically, staff is supportive as far as having them up higher. The awnings, I think, are attractive, and I think they, they add something to the building as far as some detail. I'm trying to remember, this is kind of the first I've heard of this, so I'm trying to remember as far as the other storefronts that are there, you know, how many of them have awnings and how many of them don't. And, and I would probably lean to looking at that. So if there wasn't, if all of them had awnings, it might look kind of funny and, or out of place, but if there were some of the, the facades of the buildings and everything that didn't, then it might fit in, but it's something that we'd probably have to take a look at.
So when you say it would fit in, do you mean it, the lower awnings, or it, no awnings at all?
It, no awnings at all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Belzer.
And I, I guess we need to figure out if there are other storefronts also with awnings at six foot eight. Because if that's the case, then it's a, Cameron, do you know, is it, is this a general issue that happened in terms of Park Place?
Yeah. So I actually did conduct a site visit, walked around on Ash Street a little bit to kind of get a sense of how the canopies are. It seems to me, just from standing out there, all of them meet that eight-six requirement, to my knowledge. Visually, this is the only one that stood out specifically.
Commissioner Block?
And I apologize. Maybe a question going back to the applicant. So what's the objection? And, and you're going to, you're going to replace the covers anyway. Is it a huge cost? Or you just don't aesthetically like the look of them higher? What's your objection to just replacing them as, as requested?
Well, we like the look of them as is. And the frames, I believe, are attached onto the windows right now. And so it's not unlike the wall. So instead of just moving them up, they would prefer to take them off completely. But the first preference is actually just to change out the fabric. They've been there for twelve years now. I don't think anybody's objected to the city. No one's been injured, I don't believe. So like, it has been previously approved. This is just a new tenant that's moved into existing building with existing awning frames.
So did you not look into having them shortened, so that maybe the top height would be the same, but to, to meet the lower height? Just to have, I assume it's a steel frame that could be reworked?
Right. I mean, I think it's just for convenience, it's just replace the fabric.
Understood.
You know? I mean, if you wanted to modify the frame, you might as well just take off the existing and put on a new one. But they would prefer instead of doing that, just to take them off altogether. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Clerk.
This is the first that staff has heard about the, an alternative proposal to remove the awnings altogether. So we don't have a, we haven't seen a plan that how that would look. I do have some concerns just removing the awnings altogether, because the awnings provide weather protection, shade protection, and that's a pretty large facade as you walk south on Ash Street. And it's a pretty significant length of, you know, no weather protection or anything else, and the awnings do provide that. So I do, I just wanted to, for the planning commission to consider that.
Thank you. Commissioner Block?
So what would that look like if we, you know, what are our options then, I guess, to either, we can obviously deny the application, accept it with the stipulations as outlined, or, you know, to maybe not derail this process? Could we give some kind of approval in the interim so that they could work that out before a governing body? Or do you think it needs to completely be continued if they won't comply?
So that's, that's really up to the planning commission. So you can approve the project as is with the stipulations as recommended by staff. And that means that going to the governing body, they would have to provide a plan to show the awnings at the bottom at eight feet, six inches as it's laid out in the tenant guidelines for Park Place. Secondly, you can, you can recommend to the governing body striking the stipulation altogether, and then it would go towards, to governing body as the applicant has proposed with, how many stipulations? With six stipulations instead of seven being recommended. Or you can request to continue it so the applicant and staff can work together to see what an alternative plan could look like.
But if we approved it with a stipulation existing, that, and, and there was some agreement between staff and the applicant as to remove them, you're saying that's too much of a change that, that it would not be able to go straight to the governing body?
I believe it, it can, it could still go to governing body. Essentially, you're making a recommendation to the, the governing body, and your options are, you can either keep it as they're proposing, so the awnings stay at six-eight, or you can, but you'd need to strike stipulation number two, or you would approve it as is, kind of like Michelle had indicated, indicating as far as that they would have to take a look at something as far as making it eight foot six, this located there. And those, or take them off completely. I think that that's something that we could evaluate, but it would take some time, and probably for this board to see it again, or the planning commission to see it again, we'd probably need to continue the case so we can actually take a look as far as the application.
If we continue it, we just put it on the next month's, or this month's agenda for then, the end of May?
Correct. I believe it's May twenty-eighth.
Commissioner Block?
Then I guess I would ask the applicant, I mean, again, my thought was to potentially keep the process moving, assuming this is a small business, wants to get open, you know, hate to spend two or three more months going through this process. So I guess my question to them would be, you know, are you willing, if, if we approve to keep the stipulation in, or would you rather, you know, continue it and try to take them off? I guess it's.
Mr. Ewing?
Prefer like the option to not have any delays. So we don't want to push it back to a continuance. So whatever we need to do to keep the process moving along, and we appreciate your help with that. So that's what we're thinking, too.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the case? Commissioner Block?
Well, kind of where I was going with that, just as a discussion item, I mean, was, you know, again, to keep this going. I, I personally think that they should comply with the, uh, design guidelines for the development. You know, I understand that they're existing, but I think, like staff said, it appears it was an oversight. You know, I understand that the applicant probably doesn't want to go to the expense to shorten them, and, and, you know, sees it as an option of taking them off. But I, I agree with staff that I don't feel comfortable just taking it off and just saying they don't have, have awnings, not seen any rendering. So, you know, personally, I, I think that we should, I would like to continue the case down the path by including the stipulation as written.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I feel like we've kind of been down this road before, where things ended up going differently than the way that we approved them. So I'd like to not see that happen again. If we're moving forward with all the stipulations, then I think that's, I agree with Commissioner Block.
I see a lot of heads nodding, so I think we have a consensus. Any other discussion?
I agree. So we just want to avoid any continuance, and just proceed with what would satisfy, satisfy the commission to get this thing approved with the stipulation, or to work with staff and maybe look at if we could keep it at six foot eight or not, or on the stipulation, that'd be fine. So we just want to avoid a delay of any kind.
I, I, I think we have a consensus to move it forward in one shape or form of another. So. Any other discussion? Have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Block?
I move that we approve case NC thirty-nine, twenty-four, Park Place, Exwa Bistro, final plan for a tenant finish.
That includes all the seven stipulations?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner McGurran, second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving case number thirty-nine, twenty-four. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Case passes nine, zero. And we'll go to the governing body with the seven stipulations currently in there. Thank you. Okay, up next, we have three straight ordinance amendments. First off is case thirty-two, twenty-four, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section sixteen dash two dash eight, Special Districts, request for approval of an amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to the special flood hazard areas. Mr. Scoville, I take it you're up there because you're going to present?
Yes. Good evening, Planning Commission. Brian Scoville, City Engineer. I'll just take a second to get this. Started. Okay. So I appreciate your time tonight in consideration of the LDO update regarding the flood hazard overlay district. As you know, we had a work session on this subject a few months back, where I went over most of the changes. And so tonight, I want to just briefly go over or highlight a few of those, and try to answer any questions you might have. But let's see, the flood hazard overlay district is a part of the Leewood Development Ordinance. It's listed as the flood hazard overlay district in the code, or in the LDO, and it was last updated in two thousand nine. Since then, the Kansas Department of Agriculture, or Division of Water Resources, has asked all the municipalities and, and county agencies to update their floodplain ordinances. And so this is a process or a step to, to achieve that goal. So, and for those who don't know or, or don't remember, adopting this allows for our citizens to apply for and flood, flood insurance with FEMA, so that they can, you know, in the event of a major catastrophe, they are covered. The majority of this will remain unchanged. We have a, a table of several changes that I want to highlight. I'll get to that here. I should note, the second bullet point there, the Stormwater Committee, made up of several citizens and half of the city council, have reviewed this, and they were supportive of staff's recommendation to move forward for Planning Commission's consideration tonight. And since the work session, we did receive concurrence from. And since the work session, we did receive concurrence from the chief engineer for the Kansas Department of Agriculture Division of Water Resources, and I have a reference to that at the end of the slide here. But to highlight a few of these items, the state template calls out freeboard requirements of one foot. It's common for several agencies in the metropolitan area to utilize two foot as the freeboard. Freeboard is often referred to as the distance between the lowest opening of a structure and the base flood elevation or that hundred-year elevation of the water surface for a hundred year event. It can also be referred to as the space between the lowest member of a bridge and that water surface in a creek. So it can refer to different things, but Overland Park and the city of Leewood, Overland Park being our neighbor to the west upstream, utilize two feet as the freeboard, and that's what's currently in our ordinance, and we'd like to keep that with this update. But we just want to point it out, point out that it is different from the template. And the state does allow us to, to implement more restrictive measures, but they don't allow us to relax the measures from their standards. So I should also point out, future Zone X is not regulated by the state. You do not need a floodplain permit from the Kansas Department of Agriculture or Division of Water Resources to do work in flood Zone X. Flood Zone X, in this case, is often referred to that area upstream from the regulated floodplain where the floodplain is less than, or the drainage area contributing to the floodplain is less than a square mile. So if you can imagine, the creek has a large drainage area, but as you get further upstream in that drainage area, the drainage area gets smaller. So it's just normally that area drains out faster from the storm events, and the flooding is considered a low risk in those areas. So we do not regulate that, and we don't plan to. However, we are looking at providing some guidance to our citizens when they do work in those areas that they should consider so that they don't put themselves at additional risk. And we'll be looking into that later this year as we consider updating several code requirements associated with additions or property improvements. The next item here, Designated Review Official, this is simply clarifying who can sign off on these approvals. And right now, it's been the Director of Public Works, but we have staff that are more than capable and well-educated on stormwater requirements that are able to sign off on these documents as well. So we want to, we want to make that an option. The allowable base flood elevation, the next item on the list there, development within the floodway fringe. So this is with respect to rise, how much the water level can rise within the fringe of the flood, floodplain. The state template has one foot. We currently do not allow any rise within the floodplain fringe, and a lot of that has to do with where we're at within the drainage area. We're downstream from a lot of development, and we have a significant number of properties in the northern, especially in the northern area of Leewood where the standards by which the storm sewer systems were designed aren't as effective as the standards today. And so we have several drainage systems up north that don't meet our standards, and they flood more frequently. So maintaining a no rise is important, I think, especially for northern Leewood. Moving to cumulative improvement, this one's a little, little challenging in that this is referring to when a property owner must bring a structure or property up to current standards. Oftentimes, a property can invest in improvements, and they increase their property value, but we have to be careful that we don't, property owners are, do not continue to invest in properties that are already prone to flooding. And so there's a standard, the FEMA recommends each agency establish a standard for cumulative improvement. We're recommending 10 years. So what this means is a property owner may improve their property by a value equal to 50% of the current market rate of the structure. If they exceed that, they are required to bring the entire structure up to current standards. They can do, right now, they can do improvements today and then come back, say, six months from now, and do more improvements, and each time they're at 49%, right? And it's not cumulative. So they, they can turn a $100,000 improvement into a $500,000 improvement fairly quickly. And in the meantime, it's, it's putting a risk, they're already at risk, and it could impact the flood insurance program and how much money might need to be paid out. And so the federal FEMA wants us to look into regulating that. 10 years is suggested in the documentation but not required. 10 years is what we would like to utilize as the standard for the cumulative, to track all improvements over 10 years. We do that every time someone does a flood, works in the floodplain, they have to get a floodplain permit, so we would track it through those permits, and it would be tied to their address. Then we have flood hazard overlay districts. We currently reference a flood hazard overlay district, but since I've been here, I have found no maps or records of an actual flood hazard, city flood hazard overlay district. So we want to clean that up, and actually, our legal department recommended that, that's the first thing they said we needed to clean up on this when, when we told them we were going to update. And then finally, the letter of map revision on fill. It's not required to include this information. The state template recommends the agency consider including it. This is basically guidance information related to property that might have some fill located on it, but it wasn't accurately mapped when, because of the complexities of accurate mapping on that detailed scale. So imagine you could have all of your elevations identified for your property, but when you zoom into the property, you might have one area or one corner that just wasn't picked up by the surveys that were done back in 2008, 2009. So this letter of map revision on fill allows for property owners to do map amendments or map revisions based on fill. So we would like to include documentation in the, in the ordinance so that it's readily available for citizens, and it can kind of help guide them through that process. This highlights this, the major changes. Most of the other changes are fairly incidental to routine adjustments in language, minor wording changes, a lot of format changes. And with that, I would just note the letter we received from the Kansas Department of Agriculture Division of Water Resources regarding agreeing with our recommended changes. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Scoville? Mr. Block?
Just one, Brian. The, I think the cumulative improvement section makes sense. Other than, how do you administer the portion, talking about the current market value?
So the current market value, there's FEMA guidance on that. There's a document that we can hand the citizens that explains how this works. So, but in summary, the applicant can utilize, if they choose, they can utilize the county, current county appraisal information, which staff has access to, or they may consider hiring an appraiser to establish a more current or detailed appraisal, which often will help them in their, in their efforts to make improvements.
And then you verify that on your own anyway, or you just take what they do?
So if they utilize the county's information, then, then we would check that. If they utilize an appraiser, the appraisers are licensed and certified. They have an ethical obligation to meet certain standards. We would accept that appraiser's appraisal document.
And then one last thing, I assume that's a rolling calendar, so whatever they did nine and a half years earlier, whatever, would fall off six, you know?
Yeah. It was so if they did something 10 years and one day ago, you know, they may apply one day after the 10 years just to get by, and, and we would work with them on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Franzay?
So a question on the same topic, the cumulative improvement timeframe. Does the city keep track of the value of improvements made to the property through, like permitting? Or how, how is that tracked? And do we have those records back 10 years so that if someone applies tomorrow, we'd have that?
Great question. We would track it through the floodplain development permit, and so that would be tied to the address. And we do not have the last 10 years, but we'd start, we would start maintaining those records if we want to utilize the 10 years. So it would start today, and it would move forward, but we couldn't go back from, you know, in history today. If we did, it would just be happenstance that we have that information.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any discussion on case 3224 by the commission? Is there a motion? Oh, thank you. This case does require a public hearing. Is there anyone or in the audience or on Zoom that would like to be heard tonight on this case? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Fishman?
No, I moved to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Block. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Public hearing is closed, nine, zero. That brings us to discussion. Any discussion on case 3224? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Block?
I move for approval of case 3224, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-2-8, Special Districts.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Belzer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving case 3224, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Case 24, 3224 is approved, nine, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scoville. Up next is case number 3424, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-4-1, Accessories Uses. Request for Approval of Amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to residential generators. And Ms. Kriks, looks like you have this one?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Michelle Kriks, Leewood Planning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is case 3424, an amendment to 16-4-1.3 of the Leewood Development Ordinance, which proposes to increase the minimum size of residential generator subject to governing body approval from over 22 kilowatt to over 26 kilowatts. In February, the Planning Commission held a work session to discuss, to discuss a proposed change by increasing the minimum kilowatt size of a generator for residential use. Currently, the Leewood Development Ordinance requires a governing body approval after a recommendation by Planning Commission of all residential generators that exceed 22 kilowatts or 48 cubic feet in size. A generator that is 22 kilowatts or smaller is actually administrative reviewed by our, through our building department. Regardless of what level of review a residential generator is, receives, all guidelines that are currently outlined in the Leewood Development Ordinance must be followed. So some of these guidelines include that only one generator per lot is allowed. They are either powered by natural gas or propane. They must be located within the rear yard. They must be located within five feet of the primary structure, otherwise known as the house. They are to be screened by either evergreen screening, evergreens, or a fence not to exceed four feet in height, and that screening must be located within three to five feet of the generator unless there's specific guidance by the manufacturer that states otherwise. And noise by the generator cannot exceed 60 decibels at the property line. At the February Planning Commission work session, staff went through the three most commonly requested generators and determined regardless of the size of the generator, whether it was a 22, a 24, or a 26 kilowatt generator, the output and size were all, were all similar. And I did include a copy of the minutes in the packet just to refresh your memory or for those commissioners that were not on the commission at that time. So we are seeing an increase in the generator requests. So far in 2024, as of tonight, we've brought forward six generator requests for Planning Commission consideration going onto governing body, and five of those were a 24 or 26 KW generator. So therefore, staff is recommending to increase the kilowatt size of a residential generator subject to governing body approval from larger than 22 kilowatt to larger than 26 kilowatt. So what that means is that if this is approved, then anything 26 kilowatt or smaller in size would just go through the administrative review process through our building department and still be subject to those, those points that I outlined earlier. If I have any questions, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kriks. Any questions for staff? I will note that this case does require a public hearing. So open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on case 3424? Or on Zoom? Commissioner Block?
Saying none, I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Carver?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurn. All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Public hearing is closed, nine, zero. Brings us to discussion by the commission. Anyone wishes to speak on the commission on this case? Have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Belzer?
I move for approval of case 34-24, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16-4-1.3, Permanently Installed Generators.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Franzay. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving case 3424, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Case 3424 is approved, nine, zero. That brings us up to case 1324, A, B, and C, Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Section 16, 16-2-6.4, Mixed Use Development District, MXD, Section 16-3-9, Deviations, Section 16-9, Definitions. Request for Approval of an Amendment to the Leewood Development Ordinance pertaining to the creation of an MXD-4 district. Kriks, I think you're on this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Planning Commission, Michelle Kriks, Leewood Planning Department. This is case 13-24, A, B, and C, Amendments to Section 16-2-6.4, which is the Mixed Use Development District, Section 16-3-9, which are deviations, section Leewood Development Ordinance, and Article 9 definition, which is our definition section of the Leewood Development Ordinance, which proposes to create and support a new zoning district within mixed use called Mixed Use Development District with a four-story maximum or MXD4. So I've broken this into kind of three different parts, the A, B, and C, so we'll just kind of talk through each section here differently, separately. So first, Part A addresses a new zoning classification within mixed use. Initially, with fall of 2023, the Planning Commission recommended a Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to the Mixed Use District, lowering the maximum height district-wide from 90 feet down to 60 feet. Ultimately, the governing body denied that amendment citing concerns of reducing the height citywide may not work in all areas, like such as in the differences maybe between 100, 135th Street corridor versus maybe areas right along 435. And... Um, and, um, they would like to limit the maximum height specifically along the one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor. So the governing body directed staff to investigate, uh, possibly an overlay district along one hundred and thirty-fifth street where the height, uh, would be reduced. Um, with some discussion between staff and legal, um, discovered that possibly creating that over, overlay district could be pretty tricky. Uh, so maybe the best solution was to create a sub-district within the mixed use and limit the height of the building to four stories, which is the M X D four. So we've had some work sessions, um, on this topic where we would keep the traditional mixed use district in place, uh, where the height of that, of the traditional mixed use would still be ninety feet, but also create a separate district called M X D four, which would be lowering that height of that district to sixty feet or four stories, whichever is less. So those, um, those, uh, those developments that already have the M X D zoning would not be impacted by this. This would be for future new zoning if this is approved. No other changes to the M X D are proposed, so mix of uses, setbacks, um, residential requirements, uh, densities, that would all remain the same. So the only change would be a, a new, a new height within that zoning district. Section B of this request or this, uh, proposed amendment, um, is referring to sixteen dash three dash nine, which is our deviation section. And this is expressly addressing deviations for the height of a building within the mixed use district and would also, uh, be part of that, uh, M X four would also be part of that. This amendment would allow the governing body to approve a height deviation of a building with a two-thirds vote of the governing body membership rather than the three-quarter supermajority vote currently outlined in the regulations. And this is allowing a little bit more flexibility to the governing body. Additionally, deviations would be allowed, um, if the building was considered unique, iconic, or would have a distinctive design and would have the opportunity to possibly become a landmark building within Leewood. Our deviation could be considered to the height, uh, for topography or if adjacent uses that could make a taller building more appropriate. So that means like, you know, if there's, um, say, there's, based on the discretion, maybe between, uh, staff recommendation, discretion of the Planning Commission, discretion of governing body with a two-thirds super, uh, two-thirds vote, excuse me. An applicant could actually exceed that height being requested if the building was considered maybe unique or could be considered really a landmark building within the city of Leewood. And finally, Part C would actually be a new definition for topography since it is addressed in the deviation section. Just wanted to ensure that there was a clear definition of what topography actually meant and what we were, um, what we would define it as. And staff is recommending the term topography to be defined as the configuration or arrangement of the earth's natural surface, including relative relief, elevations, and the position of land features. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kriks. Any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Commissioner Fishburg, Fishman, sorry.
Yes, it, um, I had understood that the staff was going to come back with a recommendation of, uh, lowering the maximum height limit in, um, uh, in M X D four to seventy-five feet rather than sixty.
In, in talking as far as with discussions with the governing body and also with the Planning Commission, the, the four stories is what we were kind of looking at and that's what we were directed to at first. Originally, we came through with proposing fifty-five feet and then that actually got lifted to sixty feet. Um, and so I, I think that that's what staff is trying to, to keep that at that point. Right now, we have as far as the residential, um, the residences, the Parkway Plaza, which is a five-story building and that's actually at seventy-five feet and we have some other five-story that I believe in that same range. So we're actually trying to hold it down more to a four-story.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Block?
Um, so, so, in the next case, there were some letters that were sent out about noticing, uh, providing notice to some homeowners and some HOAs, but it really, I know it's in reference to the comprehensive plan, but it's really because of this change. Right? Do I understand that correctly?
That is correct. It's, it's, we, we needed to make sure that the proposed amendment and the annual review of the comprehensive plan, which is the next case that's up on the docket, go hand in hand. And we wanted to ensure, um, that, um, homes associations and property owners were aware of a potential change to the future land use map.
And was that citywide or was that just in the one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor?
Those, affected properties and along one hundred and thirty-fifth street corridor.
And, uh, offhand, you know how many that was? How many landowners there are, how many?
There were fifty, approximately fifty.
Letters total?
Well, fifty landowners, but then that did not include the multiple homes associations that it went to.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Franze.
Uh, I just had a note, um, in looking at the changes on sixteen dash three dash nine in Section A eight. Looks like we added the word when to the start of the introductory paragraph and I think that should actually go as the first word of B under Section eight. I'm not sure how we, if we need to amend that or how we handle that.
You could probably amend that with the, with the, when the motion occurs.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, can you direct me what page you were looking at again?
So it's, uh, the changes in sixteen dash three dash nine deviations.
Is that item eight?
Yeah, item eight, where we say when at the end of the introductory paragraph. I think that should be the first word of subsection B instead. So then I would say upon approval by a two-thirds vote of the members of the governing body to allow for the construction of a building for A and when the topography and adjacent uses justify for B.
Okay, I see that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Franze. Any, um, additional questions? Commissioner Carburg?
Still being somewhat new on this and this was here before I was, uh, if I could get, get a quick summary of why this is back, as I understand it, the Planning Commission sent to the governing body a recommendation which they rejected and they wanted it reworked because they were unhappy with too much height, correct?
I, I think the concern of the governing body is if we did it where we just changed the mixed use development district and had maximum height being ninety feet down to sixty feet. They were concerned that there might be other areas in the city where you don't really have a conglomeration of different M X D altogether. Um, and therefore you wouldn't have the same kind of impacts. And so they didn't like that idea because it would have restricted maybe M X D in other areas. And they, and they didn't want to, to take that action. They wanted to kind of have it more concentrated down along one hundred and thirty-fifth street. Because you do have such a high conglomeration on the comprehensive plan as far as what's shown as M X D.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? With that, we'll open this, this case requires a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on, uh, case thirteen dash, uh, twenty-four? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good afternoon, Jay Shodry.
I'm sorry, please state your name and your address and you'll get four minutes. We'll have a timekeeper and you'll hear annoying buzzer when your time's up.
I won't take four minutes hopefully, but Jay Shodry, uh, one-one-two-five-one Strangeline Road, Parkland Group, Inc. I have some lots that I own in Cornerstone, uh, right on one hundred and thirty-fifth and Noll. So few questions. When the mixed use plan, the comprehensive plan was approved in twenty eighteen, so is this affecting the entire twenty eighteen plan? And I don't know if you should answer now or whatever, but there was a comprehensive plan approved. So is this affecting the entire twenty eighteen comprehensive plan?
Mr. Chair, may I go ahead and speak?
Go ahead, Ms. Kriks.
This actually, this, um, sir, this particular case is actually addressing a Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment. We are going to be addressing the comprehensive plan update in our next case. If that would, might be a better place for you to, um, bring up your, your concern. But that, this is not a, this specific case is not addressing the future land use map. But just to say, by state statute, we're actually required to do an annual review of our comprehensive plan. So the next case is our annual review of our comprehensive plan. And, um, not, we will be doing a full update of our comprehensive plan later this year. We're going to take that back out to the public. But this is, uh, their next case is actually just part of our annual update, our annual review.
But this affects, because currently I'm in a zone that is allowed the ninety foot. So is that going to a M X D four now?
Only if it's being rezoned, if it's approved.
Okay, so if its current zoning does not change, then it's?
Correct. Where this is, none of this is rezoning property.
Okay.
None of this is, none, nothing tonight is rezoning property. This particular case is proposing a new ordinance to be incorporated into our Leewood Development Ordinance. Our future land use map becomes our guide. So if there's any future rezoning, we will look to our comprehensive plan to see what that particular piece of property is proposed or has been, might be more appropriate to be zoned to. So if it comes, somebody comes in and wants to do residential, we will take a look at that and would it follow our comprehensive plan?
Okay, it's still kind of confusing to me, but I, I don't know, maybe to you guys it's not, but. So currently if I'm zoned under M, you know, M X whatever, right, and it's ninety feet. So if I'm zoned under that and I'm not changing the zoning, so tomorrow I'm allowed that ninety-foot height. Is that correct? Because the letter, the, the letter that was sent out is kind of, doesn't quite explain it that way. Maybe, you know, I'm just not understanding it, but it, uh, just was confusing. And I had a couple of emails and even had my architect email and they were even confused with the answers. So that's why.
We can actually, if you want to give me a call, we can set up a meeting and we can talk it through so we can explain it.
Okay.
So you're clear.
I just want to make sure. You, you said that you're in the Cornerstone Development currently right now. Currently, Cornerstone is in zone M X D. It's shown on the comprehensive plan map, which is the future development plan. So right now, you, the zoning, you're limited to fifty feet right now.
Okay.
If this amendment gets approved and the one after this one gets approved, then we would be recommending M X D four, which would take M X D from ninety feet down to sixty feet. But under your current zoning right now, you, you're at fifty feet. It would have to rezone that to M X D.
Okay, and because the current zoning is just fifty feet, really?
It's just fifty feet because it's general retail, S D C R.
I thought that was mixed use over there.
And we show it on the comp plan as being mixed use. And so the comp plans were identifying different, but we actually aren't rezoning. So, but this would affect that property. If this gets approved and the comprehensive plan map gets approved as proposed, then we would recommend that you go to M X D four, which would have the sixty-foot.
Sixty-foot, right, okay, all right. And when is that coming up? That's going to be?
That's directly after this case.
After this, okay, all right, okay, all right, all right.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on case thirteen twenty-four? Okay, seeing none, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block?
I move for, uh, closing the public hearing.
Is there a second? Second, Commissioner Belzer. Any discuss, um, any discussion on the motion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Uh, hearing is closed, nine zero. That brings us up to discussion by the commission. Anyone wish to discuss case thirteen twenty-four? Commissioner Block?
Well, maybe just Michelle or Mark, just to maybe expand upon that previous discussion. It's just that, I mean, all we're doing is approving a different type of zoning that will be available. And then, like you said, the next case is just a recommendation of where that, this zoning could be utilized. But if someone brings a different project in completely and they, on, on its merits, you all think it's worth going forward, then they could either rezone it to something different. Or maybe I should stop there and let you.
So, yes, correct. This, this, this particular case is proposing amendments into the Leewood Development Ordinance. So it was, you know, it's a public hearing, goes to the governing body. If the governing body approves it, our Leewood Development Ordinance would be updated with this text. The next case is our comprehensive plan update and consideration of changes to the future land use map. That future land use map is our guide. That is our guide to tell us what property, what, what is the highest and best use based on public, um, public comment for the, a particular piece of property. So right now, a majority of one hundred and thirty-fifth street is all zoned mixed use, or I'm sorry, is comprehensively planned for mixed use. A comprehensive plan does not effectively zone property. It's just, it's our guide. So when people come talk to the staff about wanting to do a particular project, the first thing we do is we pull out our future land use map. We're going to take a look at it and go, what does this say? And that helps guide our conversation with, with developers and property owners as they're wanting to come in and do improvements or, you know, full-on developments in, within pieces of property. But the, it doesn't, it doesn't zone the property. It acts as our guide.
But it would be what we'd be recommending for the zoning from, based on that comprehensive plan.
Correct.
So we, we do utilize it. So when you indicated as far as if they wanted a different zoning, they always have the ability to come in and make an application to rezone. Staff would not recommend that because it was not in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, they could still go forward in the Planning Commission, the governing body. Uh, the Planning Commission could recommend and the governing body approve, but staff's recommendation would be denial.
And, and I guess when, when I stopped there was just because, uh, for example, the Aventino development was zoned as something different or, or in the comprehensive, comprehensive plan as something different. They made their case and it got approved ultimately, right? So, I mean, that's a case where even though the comprehensive plan said something, ultimately, they were able to do something different by.
Correct, correct. And so staff did recommend denial on that and, but they, the Planning Commission, governing body did overrule.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this case? Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block?
I move for approval of case, uh, thirteen dash twenty-four, A, B, and C. Leewood Development Ordinance Amendment to Sections, um, as mentioned previously.
As amended?
As amended.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Block. Commissioner Carburg, second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor of approving case thirteen twenty-four, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Commission passes at nine zero. That brings us up to case twenty-two twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four Annual Update of the City of Leewood Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Kriks, you are up again.
Val, can you come unlock the computer, please? All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Michelle Kriks, Leewood Planning Department. And this is case twenty-two twenty-four, the night, or the twenty twenty-four Annual Comprehensive Plan Review and Update. So every year, uh, by Kansas State Statute, cities and counties across the state of Kansas are required to per, uh, perform an annual review of their comprehensive plan. It's actually a huge job of the Planning Commission. And to ensure that, um, land uses, um, were, that are, are current, that we're looking at our tables and census data to ensure that we have the latest and greatest information because that, um, that is, um, information that the developers look at and. because that, um, that is, um, information that the developers look at and we're always looking to as our guide and our resource to future land uses within the city of Leewood. Unfortunately, we've not, um, come to you with our, um, future land, or, sorry, our annual and update since 2019. So we're wanting to get, um, our annual update taken care of. But we're also planning to come through with, um, our, oh, a, a big chain, or hopefully a big overhaul of our comprehensive plan, take it out to this, uh, back out to the citizens, really do lots of public workshops, a really substantial public engagement process, steering committee, ensure that our goals and policies that are currently in chapter four of the comprehensive plan are still valid. The last time we did a, a big update to our comprehensive plan was 2020, is that right? Does that sound right?
2000.
2000, oh, yeah, sorry, sorry. Seems a long time ago. Uh, 2000 was the last time we did a substantial update to the comprehensive plan. So what's before you today has just been kind of continued forward with tables and information, just, um, with minor updates. So, uh, first, we're going to go through the future land use map, uh, just kind of discuss some of the updates that staff is proposing. Uh, we've, uh, talked about this a couple of times, three times, I believe, in work sessions. Uh, nothing new has been provided, but we'll go through it for the public so they can, um, see on the map what we're looking at. So first, uh, proposing to update the future road network for the hills of Leewood Villas at 151st and Mission Road. In 2019, oh, sorry, let me go back up. So in 2019, um, everything here in the dash line was proposed there as the, uh, road network connecting the hills of Leewood, uh, Villa, or Leewood Villas over to Mission Road. Um, the, uh, road network is being proposed with, uh, the most recent plan, um, that has, uh, actually expired. But we still would like to make sure we're maintaining that road connection over to Mission
Can you point us to what page you're on?
In the comprehensive plan?
Correct.
Well, we're looking at the future land use map.
Page 52.
Were we given the map?
It, yes, it was in the, uh, comprehensive plan packet.
What page, please?
52. Uh, second, uh, proposed change to the future land use map is updating the Aventino development to reflect the current zoning from the mixed use development, um, in institutional. So the mixed use development was between 135th Street and 137th Street, and the institutional land use south of 137th Street to reflect the medium density residential that is currently zoned with the RP2 with that residential development. The bank property also within, um, this area here at the corner of 135th and Fontana, we're proposing to reflect that as, uh, retail for the retail bank. And then the Gardens of Velagio, um, office here along 137th, we're proposing to, uh, reflect that as office. And that really just reflects what the current zoning is on that site. Another change that staff is proposing is to identify the location of the new apost- Apostolic Church, uh, within the Village of Seville at 133rd and State Line. Uh, change, a proposed change is updating the street connection. I cannot. Updating the public street connection from 133rd Street to 135th Street within the East Village Development. Removing the public road designation within the Mayfair at Regent's Park Residential Development, west of High Drive and north of 137th Street, since this road is now a private road. And, um, changing the future land use designation of the Pastoral Dreamer Site property, um, and the property directly west of the, uh, Pastoral Dreamer property, uh, from mixed use development to office, um, to the office use here, and then residential on over to Row Avenue. And then the biggest change, I believe, is going to be kind of tie into our previous case, is to reflect, uh, parcels along 135th Street to propose new zoning does, or new future land use of the mixed use development, four-story maximum. So the properties that we've, um, are proposing to reflect as the four-story maximum are going to be those properties that either do not have, um, a, maybe have an ag zoning, has an expired preliminary development plan, um, on site, or could be proposed for redevelopment sometime in the future. So we're looking at possibly, uh, Cornerstone, which is, um, doesn't have MXD zoning, it actually has a general retail zoning, uh, Plaza Point, um, here at the, uh, southwest corner of 135th and Noll, over to Row. Uh, this vacant parcel from Row to Noll on the north side of 135th Street, or to Mission Road, excuse me, uh, from Mission Road over to, um, the Lord of Life Church and the Velagio, uh, showing, representing all that as the MXD four-story. Uh, this piece here, um, within the, or just, uh, west of the, one MXD, and then this, uh, parcel here at the, uh, um, 135th and Kenneth Road. And so as we stated, these are not actually rezoning the properties, these are reflecting these to be future land use. Zoning is initiated by the property owner or the applicant. They will actually come in, initiate the rezoning application with staff, and we bring that forward to the planning commission for a public hearing and goes on to the governing body. What we're doing with the future land use map is providing that guide of what the, uh, uses, um, what the highest and best use of those sites would be, of those properties. And then, last but not least, on the future land use map, um, is reflecting the, uh, property south of the, um, Leewood Village there across the street from Ward Parkway. It's got a lot of office space there, right along, um, State Line Road, about 89th and State Line Road. Due to the proximity to residential and the parkland, staff is recommending also that to be reflected as an MXD four. That is currently zoned office, but it could be possibly ripe for redevelopment at any, um, in the future. In addition to these proposed changes to the future land use map, uh, staff updated tables to reflect the current census data from both the 2020 decen- decennial census and the projected 2023 data from the American Community Survey. Development information was updated, and finally staff, uh, finally the names of the governing body, the planning commission and staff are updated. No changes were proposed to chapter four, which were the goals and poli, the goals and objectives. And, um, that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Any questions for Ms. Cricks? Commissioner Block.
Michelle, on this, your second to last slide, um, is that maybe not updated from our last conversation, just with those small parcels, Madison McFarland and right next to the Lord of Life? Those should all be, I think it's reflected maybe in our packet properly.
Yes, it is reflected, I apologize, you're correct, and that's my oversight. It is reflected correctly, that, um, this small parcel here that has a small bank, I think it's now a financial, um, advisory building, but it used to be a bank here, uh, directly across from Lord of Life Church, and then the Madison McFarland Building here at the very corner of 135th and State Line, um, have been reflected to be MXD four as well, in your, um, in your packet.
And then the other, uh, maybe just one more time, just restate, you know, what, what this potential overlay of this MXD four, I, I know you've said it three times, but just, just to be sure that we're all clear on, on what is being proposed and, and what's the option of, of landowners and such in the future in those affected areas?
So what is being proposed is an update to the future land use map. This is not a rezoning. It's reflecting the future land use map. So if somebody, say, wants to come in here at 135th and Mission Road, and they want to come in and do a development, we are going to pull out this plan and we're going to look at it, and we're going to talk with the applicant to say, our future land use map shows us to be mixed use development with a maximum of four stories. And we'll work with the applicant and hopefully bring forward an application that complies with the future land use map. That, um, but we are not initiating that zoning. So as, um, the director alluded to a little bit ago, that somebody could come in and they don't want to do mixed use for, they could come up with a, they could come in and say, no, we want to do, we want to do an 80-foot building, and we want to do the traditional mixed use. They have the right to come forward with any zoning request they want to do. Staff is going to review that, and staff is going to bring forward a recommendation to the planning commission. A lot of that will hinge on what does our comprehensive plan say? So the comprehensive plan kind of works like a funnel, so you kind of have the big ideas and goals, and then it works into the Leewood Development Ordinance. So it kind of works all together. So we look at what, what's the big idea, what's the goals and policies, what is the vision of the city? Works down into, then the Leewood Development Ordinance brings forward, then, okay, this is what the goal is. So if we have, um, MXD for future land use, we need to have the corresponding zoning district to be able to look to. We can't just, we can't do, um, in this case, we could not do a Leewood Development Ordinance without, um, the future land use and vice versa. We need to be able to, and it's, the, the public has a right to know what the future land use of the property is.
And Mr.?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to clarify, you called it an overlay district, it's not an overlay district.
I think that was used in some of our past conversations, I apologize. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. This case requires a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on case 2224 in the audience? Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name and address.
Good, good evening. Phil Gibbs, Jr., Continental Consulting Engineers, we're at 9,000 State Line Road. Uh, I also have with me Phil Gibbs, Sr. We are the owners of the office building there, and have been for the last 34 years. And, uh, it's the building with the red tile roof, kind of down in the sag curve, north of Rockers, but of course on the Leewood side there. We received the notification for this public hearing, and, um, uh, we are, uh, love being a part of the community, love working in the community, love living in the community as well. But we do come before you to disagree with our proposed, uh, change on our particular property. Um, and I just want to go through those reasons. It, uh, basically, uh, we don't have any immediate plans for our property, I will say that. We have three and a half acres there, beautiful property, um, but our property is unique. To the north side of our property is Dykes Branch Creek, so very low area. And case earlier tonight talked about the floodplains. So each time FEMA studies and creates a new map, the floodplain enlarges onto our property, which basically reduces, if a future plan came forward, we would have a smaller footprint to do something different, something to handle property. And so what that kind of leads to is, is a taller piece of, of building, um, to make that, uh, property really developed to its full and best use. Um, and, and the second reason is because of the terrain, we have a very steep incline from the north property line up to our south property line, and where our finished floor of our, first floor of our building is 50 to 60 feet below the nearest resident to the south. And so, um, I guess I would say that I would like to have some uniqueness of the properties be considered when you're changing the future, uh, land use, uh, classification on a property. And I feel like ours fits into that because of these two reasons, both because of the flooding, uh, floodplain, which I, I need to say to the record, we have never seen any flooding anywhere near to where the map currently shows the flood limits, but, uh, because of that, reducing the future development area of our property, and due to the terrain of it being in that sag, that a taller building would be very appropriate, um, in the area. And I think to, and I don't mean this negatively, but to broad rush saying the four-story limit, in our particular case, I don't think is appropriate. I would, I would rather consider it just a mixed use development there. And just feel like maybe a case-by-case basis, um, looking at the property, uh, should be done when you're changing the future land use on a property. So appreciate your kiss, your consideration, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, in the back. Please state your name and address for the record, and you have, uh, four minutes.
Good evening, my name is Fred Adams, and, um, here on behalf of the ownership of 8900 State Line, that would be the best address, Leewood, Kansas, the office building just north of the Gibbs. And, um, I would, uh, without having talked to them, um, reiterate a couple of those, uh, items as well. Um, one of them, um, to add on to the things, including topography and taking into account, um, the, the hill and the, that I guess I would like to see the, I think as Ms. Cricks already referred to, is that the topography that changes, exactly how does that come into play in terms of where the four stories may count? Um, our building technically as it is, is five stories, however, at no point is it really over and above, uh, really three and a half stories. So I guess that's kind of an inquiry that I'd like to be a part of, um, to be updated on. Um, number two, in terms of the floodplain, the nine years we've owned the building, that's increased by about seven feet, and I reiterate, what the Gibbs are saying is that there hasn't been a flood in that way. And so then furthermore, as you guys have experienced, the JCW has come in, and they're also doing some, uh, eminent domain for rights of way, and they're building some buildings there. So all of that to say that those have some diminution of value for the property. And the final thing that I would bring up is the MXD four, as I understand it, um, requires a mix of three uses, typically office, then retail, and some kind of residential, and there's some then percentage of each of the three. And I've had conversations with some, like, um, other property owners and developers, if there could be, uh, a consideration that instead of all three being required, that there can be, say, two of three, and then that makes the classification, because it's, uh, it's quite unique, it's quite restrictive, and in some things, say like where our area is, you know, um, to be able to do all three is, uh, rather than having to go through some kind of exemption process or variation, I'd rather it just have some flexibility within the rules as established. Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on case 224, 24? Sir, please state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Uh, Phil Gibbs at 9,000 State Line Road, Sr. Bought the building in 1990, 34 years ago. Uh, Phil did a really good job. He's a better politician than I am, I'm going to tell you straight out. Just one thing I looked at today. In 34 years, we've paid over a million dollars worth of taxes on that property. We don't get the 30% break like retail, I mean, like homes do, but we, we've paid over a thou, a million dollars in taxes, and that includes the city, the school district, and so on, in, in that timeframe. We've enjoyed it, and I want to tell Mike over there, we're not going to build a building over there and put him in the shade, uh, because he lives right over there behind me, over there. Uh, but I, I really think that you need to look at the topography. And a good thing like that, if you're 10 years old to 18 years old, you've probably slided on our property, either in the front yard or on the side yard, because it's that steep. Phil is, the change is 60 feet, the top, it's a great place to come sled, and if you guys go along with me, you can, you can come sled the next time it snows. But I just want to point out that, uh, this is the first time, when, when Mr. Klein sent me the letter, uh, we, we haven't been in work sessions with, with the planning department. letter, we, we haven't been in work sessions with, with the planning department, but I really want you to look at the topography. This is not 135th Street. This, we've got some real topography there and they're 60 foot in our property. So, I just want you to consider that on this particular property. I understand your four stories and that kind of thing, but we may be in a position, someone, it may not be me, I may be gone by then, but when somebody does do that building, they're going to have to provide some parking and they're probably going to want, and it's a unique piece of property. That's all we're saying. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on case 2224? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Please state your name and your address and you have four minutes to address.
Yes, sir. This is Tracy Palmer. I'm at 4008 West 137th Terrace in Leewood. This is 135th Street question about the zoning and the changes to, very uneducated question. What we're trying to understand is what is being planned or could potentially be planned from 137th Street South. Right now, there is no development. We have Aventino to the northwest of us, but no development to the northeast. And we're trying to understand, because our home backs up to that property and a four-story, 60-foot potential building directly behind our home is incredibly intrusive and we're just trying to understand what the city is planning, what opportunities we would have if something was planned to be four stories right there on that particular property. North of 137th is actually a little different because there is a greater amount of space between that, but south of 137th is a very difficult piece to study.
Staff like to answer that?
So, are, you're in Leewood Meadows?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, right now, so if you look at the map in front of you there, so at 137th and Mission Road, just to the southeast, it is showing as medium, I'm sorry, medium-density residential. That's what currently the plan is showing. We currently do not have any, we don't have any approved, any approved plan, I believe, on that site. We don't have any approved plan for that site and we're not proposing any future land changes to that particular site. So, anything that comes in would be subject to a preliminary plan and a final plan. If they want to rezone, they have the right to request that rezoning. It would all go through public hearing, public notification process, interact meeting and a public hearing here at the Planning Commission and the public again has an opportunity to speak at the governing body.
I'd like to consult with my team, please.
You got thumbs up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, for coming. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on case 2224? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Block?
I move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Belzer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of closing the public hearing on case 2224? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against nay? Public hearing is closed, 9-0. That brings us to discussion. Any discussion by the commission, Commissioner Fishman?
I have a question with respect to Mr. Adams' property. I know that the public hearing is closed, but could you answer, how, how high is your
I don't know that I have the answer right here. However, given the change in the topography, I think the peak is under, I'm going to say it's right around the 60 feet, but I would rather reserve the right to look it up and come back to you and we've spoken before, so I'd be happy to do that.
Right. And just to be clear, if, if your property were not included in RXD4, you would have then the right to build a building up to 90 feet in, in height. Is that correct?
As I understand it, yes.
Right. Okay. Just so I, just so I was clear. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Franze?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just think it's worth pointing out to the property owners who were talking about topography, that in the last case where we approved MXD4, one of the permitted deviations with a two-thirds vote of the governing body is related to topography and adjacent uses that justify an increased building height. So, it sounds like the properties that they're talking about are the exact type of properties where that would make sense to pursue that. So, just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Commissioner Franze.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner McGurn?
I'd like to just say that I appreciate this 75-page document. We have spent months going through it. We've probably had five different drafts that we have provided insight to. It feels a little weird to get to the last day, the last night on the final vote, which I think, think might be the first time we voted on this, and we slip in the MXD4. I would vote on all 75 of these pages in a affirmative way, but we're being asked to predetermine what is acceptable well before an applicant requests zoning. So, by accepting this tonight, staff will recommend denial that does not line up with this land use. That's the impression I have gotten. And so, when a person walks in and they say, you know, "I'd like to do, it's mixed use and I'd like to do the 85-foot building or the 75-foot building or whatever," staff is automatically, based on what the Director said, is going to recommend denial. And I rec, I realize that we may not accept that as one or two examples have occurred in the last five years. But on the other hand, we're predestining and we're, we're, we're making it harder for that person. We're, we're not allowing them to choose what zoning they desire because they're already going to get a denial without really going through the specifics of the plan and, and the detail of it. And that just continues to seem way overly restrictive to me and too extreme. And to bury it within this 75-page document in a, in a spot where you can hardly tell what it is actually telling you when it is in reality a humongous change from, you know, the last 30 years of precedent. So, I have a, I have a trouble with that. I'm, I'm, I'm still shocked by that. I, I think, I think it's just too extreme. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurn. Any other discussion? Commissioner Block?
Yeah, I'll, I'll come back to Steve's comments, but so, let me, can I just go back to the 8,900-ish State Line area? So, just so I understand and like Commissioner Franze said, I mean, you know, if they're 60 feet, for example, the Continental Building, i- it's down 60 feet and I understand that we're not considering an application for them and I don't want this to, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that on its merits if it were to come, but you know, if they're 60 feet below State Line now and they wanted to go to 90 feet, let's, or that would be the max under the mixed use, they're only 30 feet above State Line, so in, in likelihood, that would be okay because it's not a 90-foot building above State Line. I mean, is that, am I understanding that right?
Correct. Basically, the governing body wanted to create it, so if you had a situation where the property sat lower on the land, they could go up above that because it's not going to have the same impact. It's not going to tower over the adjacent uses that are around it, as opposed if you had a hill and then you built, you know, 90 feet, then you're really kind of, you know, having a big impact. And so, a lot of the properties along the 8,900 State Line and that area, they actually do look like that this is kind of what that deviation is meant for. Obviously, staff isn't the one who's approving it, is a deviation process that would go through the Planning Commission and the governing body would need a two-thirds majority vote in order to approve it, but it is the type of properties that I believe that that's what it's for.
And I, so I, what I understand from Mr. Adams' comments, that his property sits lower too, maybe not as low, but it's, it's a portion of it at eye level, there are floors that are below State Line.
Correct. And, and that would be one of the things, as far as depending on what they brought in, would take a look at. But again, topography, sounds like it would definitely be a part of that analysis that was there. And, and if I may, I, I know it seems like there's getting a little bit of confusion with regard to the future development plan and that, you know, we aren't trying, we aren't really trying to hide anything and we try to be very upfront about it and it's just a matter as far as the future development plan, if you, if you're a property owner and you want to go into a certain property within Leewood, then you go to this future development plan map and you take a look, see what, what's allowed. Now, a lot of it, the map you'll see is yellow and so, that does restrict you to residential. And it, the comp plan map also, you know, differentiates between the high-density residential, single-family, low-density residential. And so, that's what the future development plan map is actually for and that's what Ms. Kirk's was trying to, to kind of come across. Essentially, this is the city's vision of what future development will look like. And so, they always do have the ability, property owner has the ability to ask for something different and so, it's not set in stone. This is a guide and the Planning Commission has the ability to recommend and the governing body to approve something that's different from it. But this is a way to let property owners know ahead of time what the, what the city expects that property to be, either residential, commercial, and on the commercial, you know, if it's office or retail or MXD or in this case MXD4, kind of knowing what those bulk requirements are, including the height.
And I forgot from Ms. Kirk's presentation, this property on State Line at 8,900-ish, that was in the comprehensive plan just as mixed use, but now the proposal is, it wasn't something different than mixed use or office or?
That's correct. It was changed to mixed use, I believe, 2014, 2015 timeframe. So, it was, it was reflected, it's been reflected for mixed use for some time.
Okay. And then, and then one more thing on that section, you know, I think to address Mr. Adams' comment about having portions of the MDX and not others, can you address that? Because I mean, that would require a change beyond what we're considering today. That would change, make, require a change, the MDX portion of the LDO, right? If you were to--
That's correct. So, is he, I believe you're referring to the comment he made about the mix of uses. The mix of uses is currently already codified in the Leewood Development Ordinance. That was actually approved by the governing body back in March, I believe. The change of mix of uses, we went through that exercise of the 20% commercial with minimum 5%, retail 5%, office 15% residential. So, that, that mix of uses is already in place on the mixed-use development, or excuse me, yeah, mixed-use development now and there is no proposed change to the mix of uses to, on, on the MXD4 as well. We would, that would still hold the same.
But, and I, but yeah, I think those uses, if he wanted to not have residential but have more retail or vice versa, I mean, that's another conversation, kind of for another day. And we've tweaked that a little bit to, to create less commercial and more residential and, you know, over the years, but, but completely taken out one, that's not really anything that's on the table today.
That's, that's correct. I think that's something that would need to have a more conversation about and probably something that we would need to make sure that we adequately notify for in the legal record, that we're having a public hearing addressing the specific mix of uses on the MXD4. So, I think that's not appropriate to probably discuss now and try to pull, pull together on the fly.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure Mr. Adams understood at least that portion of it. And then I guess now just finally, kind of going maybe, you know, on the back of Commissioner McGurn's comments, you know, I, I think, you know, at least how I understand in the, almost 10 years or so that I've been on the commission, we've, we've used this comprehensive plan as our guide for undeveloped portions to, or areas that we think may be redeveloped, like some of those that were discussed tonight. And I, I don't know that Commissioner McGurn was advocating for this, but I don't know that you could have a blank slate. I, I mean, I, I think you all explained it pretty well, that there has to be a vision of what potentially could go there for whether it's these homeowners that are south of 137th, they don't want to wake up tomorrow and, you know, a 95-foot building's going in their backyard. They want to have some understanding before they buy that land or while they're there that, that, you know, they're, they kind of have an idea of what could go there. So, so I, I'm comfortable, I mean, we've discussed this, these, I won't use the word overlay, but the portions of, of this corridor that would, would be changed to include the MDX4 in that corridor, I, I think it makes sense. Is it perfect? I don't know. And we've had, over those three work sessions, we had a lot of discussions about little portions of it and, and, you know, I think it's something that, it, it's fluid in that this can be changed every year. So, you know, to the, to the gentleman that spoke earlier about his portion over by Noll, you know, if, if he's got some heartburn over this, you know, down the road and he gets an opportunity to develop his land and, and this doesn't fit, I think he can advocate for potentially making that change down the road or just submit an application, as we've discussed a couple of times, and, and, and take it through the process, especially if it's got a signature-type features, or if he just makes the cases that there should be something taller in that space, which I think would be the only, because he can do everything else, right? Commercial, the retail and the office. The only thing that he, that, that, that would be potentially changing his opportunities down the road would just be the height.
Correct.
Going from, you know, today, in theory, he could do 90 feet. I don't know that that would get approved based on our cases that we've had in the past. I don't know that there's any appetite at the governing body for anything 90 feet in that corridor. So, I think this is just to kind of make what's been in practice over the last, recent past codified in, in, in the comprehensive plan is at least how I understand it. So, that's all I have.
Mr. Fishman?
I've only been at this for 60 days, so excuse the, the naivete maybe in this question, but Commissioner McGurk spoke about this being a substantial change to the comprehensive plan and I agree that it, it, it seems like it is. However, I think Commissioner McGurk has suggested that there be some other review or procedure or some other step that be taken in order to further discuss or isolate this particular change and I'm not sure what that would be. I think that the process that we're using here is the appropriate one. When you approve MXD4, it needs to be inserted in the comprehensive plan. We are now having a public hearing about that. I don't know what other procedure we would, we would look to in order to further examine this issue. It seems to me that even though this is a large change, it's appropriate for action tonight without any, any further review. Thank you.
Commissioner Fishman? Any other discussion? Commissioner Belzer?
Mark, when the changes were made on the comprehensive plan to MXD4 and the property owners were notified by your letter, were, were there property owners that were upset about it? I mean, I know we have one, I see one email in here. I know there was, somebody alluded to multiple emails, but I only see one email in here. Was, was there pushback from the landowners who, were they originally MXD and now they're MXD4? Was there conversations? Were they unhappy? Can you kind of just?
We, we did receive a couple of emails with regard to what this change meant. There are actually more as far as questions of exactly how is it going to affect them? I don't recall anybody actually having, absolutely not, we're not going, you know. And, and that was the purpose of the letters, so that they could let us know and they could also be at the public hearing as well. So, we were trying to make it as open as we could, but we didn't really receive any that were like super strong against it, but we did receive some wanting to know exactly what it meant and how it was going to affect them.
Right. And so, I mean, for, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that I am interpreting what we're talking about is that, yes, this is a change on the comprehensive plan map, but it's not something that can't be overcome or you, where a landowner or developer could come with a plan that's outside of MXD4 and then it would be up to the process to decide whether, whether or not staff approves it and if you have to, is it a legal thing that you have to? You-- that you have to, you have to deny it because it doesn't fit the comprehensive plan? Or is that something that you can work with landowners and developers also to bring forth a proposal that then we look at and discuss and decide that then goes to the governing body that could be outside of MXD four?
And typically, what staff will do is, we'll take a look as far as the guidance that's approved by the city, as far as the planning commission, the governing body, and the citizenry in general, as far as for this future development plan. So we typically will not go against the future development plan, because it's our understanding that that's what the vision of the city, per the planning commission, per the elective officials, and then also the citizenry has. And so that's, typically, we will do that. But you do have that outlet, as far as what's happened in the past, is they can always bring forward another application, and the planning commission can always recommend something different, and the governing body could approve something different, which we've seen a couple of times. We've seen it in Abentino. And then, if you recall, as far as on Regent's Park, the comprehensive plan actually showed a much larger mixed-use development district on the north side of one hundred and thirty-seventh street. And when that application came through, they raised one hundred and thirty-seventh street quite a bit to the north, shrinking that MXD district, and then including, increasing as far as the RP three portion of it. So again, that was against what the comprehensive plan had said. Staff did recommend against it, but ultimately, the planning commission and the governing body, it was approved.
Okay. So I think that allows for some of that flexibility, where we can look at things through, sometimes we might be looking at things through a different lens. So I think that that sort of affords us that flexibility. And then Ms. Kirk said that, you know, this is going to go up for a whole big overhaul, which, I mean, in the long run, a lot of it might change, depending on what the citizens say. If the process is to fully and wholly involve the citizens, then a lot of things might change. So I think for now, this affords this body, I feel, some may disagree with me, a measure of flexibility, where we can make a decision that, sorry, may go against what staff recommends. We have done that in the past, and that kind of leaves it up to us to make that decision, obviously with the governing body. But I feel like we have, we have some flexibility.
You do. The comprehensive plan is a guide. It's not an ordinance, so it's for the city to use.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I might just piggyback on that?
Yes, Commissioner Hoyt.
The other thing that I think, you know, we still need to go back and remember is that in the case that we just passed before this, we specifically had a virtual recommendation that an appropriate deviation is based on, could be based on topography. So I feel like, you know, even more than most things, that we could have some flexibility and have a disagreement with maybe the way that the map is laid out. I mean, there's almost an actual, what, guidebook, you know, or step-by-step process that specifically deals with topography. So I wouldn't think that would be a particularly difficult situation to handle in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoyt. Any other discussion by the commission? Commissioner Carburg?
To that point, I think a lot of good discussion has gone on here. And so many times, in big documents like this, you take the last one, and you do the tweaks, and you get it out the door. We can have language change in here that indicates the gist of this discussion and topography, I think, very easily. So is this the first vote that we're doing on it? It's not going to be the final. So we can make those adjustments in the document.
Well, this is approving the document, actually.
Yeah, and currently, it would be approving the document right now for this update. As Ms. Kirk indicated, we do plan on going out to the overall public, and having public participation, and redoing the development plan, or the future development plan from the start and kind of ground up.
Would there be no changes?
And then there are the opportunities to change it, but this, this would be adopting it for now.
Okay. Would there be no changes, though, even after a public hearing? Or couldn't you change words in this document?
If the planning commission did recommend, as far as some changes that they wanted to see, then that would be in the recommendation. You can make that part of your recommendation to the governing body, and then the governing body would take that into consideration as far as those changes. So if there is something that you would like to see changed, now is the time to kind of bring that forward.
I would bring up the point that I would suggest that on the new designation we're talking about, that topography can be an unusual circumstance on that, that really deserves consideration when an applicant makes their application.
And currently, right now, it would require a two-third majority vote of the governing body. It wouldn't be just a simple majority vote.
Is that the only one that has two-thirds for a majority to approve?
Actually, I believe it is also the Signature Building as well, or the Iconic Building is part of that as well. So to go up above that height limit, you actually have a two-third majority vote of the governing body membership. So there is a little bit steeper bar. However, it's still possible. Currently, right now, the Development Ordinance for MXD does allow for heights to go above ninety feet, but it requires a three-quarter majority vote of the governing body in order to do that. When we talked with the governing body about this, they indicated that they would be receptive, as far as maybe if that threshold was a little bit lower, instead of three-quarters, it was two-thirds, especially if we're looking at as far as going to four-story, sixty feet, as opposed to being at the ninety feet for the starting point.
I'd say, knowing that the governing body reads the comments we have here, there shouldn't be a question of which majority they want, by one, by two-thirds, by three-fourths.
And when we talked to them, they indicated at the meeting that two-thirds, they would be, they'd be okay with two-thirds. They weren't comfortable, I think, with a simple majority, but they were comfortable as far as bringing it down a little bit from the three-quarter majority.
I'd leave my comment. It still seems odd if some things are a majority, and some things are a supermajority, and some things are a super, supermajority.
And that's used occasionally. For instance, if the planning commission recommends approval of something, the governing body, when it hears it, it needs a supermajority in order to override you. But if they agree with the recommendation of the planning commission, then they just need a simple majority.
I understand.
Mr. Block?
But just to clarify, Commissioner Carburg's comments really relate to the previous case, because this one, we're not considering majorities, or supermajorities, or topography. All we're doing is where to implement this MDX four, which we've already approved on the map.
Correct.
Just so I understand. I just want to make sure that I understood that.
Which is incorporated into this.
Correct. But this is, yeah, the previous case. Yeah, got it. Thanks.
Any other discussion by the commission? Before we go to a motion to vote, I just want to thank staff. I cannot recall in my, all my years in being on the planning commission, a more thorough process and a more time-allotted process that we've taken with this comprehensive plan. So thank you for all that you've done on this. I know we've brought up the new MXD district. We've had two work sessions on that. Based on the feedback that you guys gave me, that you weren't comfortable with it, we had another work session on it. It is a process, and some of the process, we get direction from the governing body. And we did that with this one. That's why we created that new district to begin with. We did pass something to go to the city council, and they didn't like it. So they rejected. So we're trying to now come up with another alternative to them that will be acceptable to them. They may get back to us again. We don't know. But at least we're listening to the city council, and listening to their guidance and advice, which is how we got here. So thank you to everyone for the staff. Thank you for the commission, for all the time that we have spent on this, through three work sessions to get to this point. And thank you to the public for showing up tonight, for hearing your concerns on this. It's not a done deal. We will be recommending something to the city council. Please stay involved. The city council would love to hear your opinions on this before they take a vote. So you can contact your city council people individually. You can show up at the meeting where they're going to discuss this, and you'll have another chance to express your opinion. In the meantime, we have a fabulous staff. That you have any questions, they will sit down with you and take time to go through the maps, the zoning, whatever concerns you have. I found them to be very responsive with the public, and we've gotten feedback on that before. So don't be strangers if you have something. Bring it up to the staff or your city council people before we get to that point. So with that, is there any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Is that a serious motion? Okay, please, only serious motion. Yes, Commissioner Hoyt?
Okay. I make a motion for approval of case twenty-two dash twenty-four, the 2024 annual update of the City of Leewood Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Franze is the second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor of approving the case twenty-two twenty-four, the comprehensive plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
I will put that as an eight-to-one vote, with Commissioner McGurn dissenting. The comprehensive plan is approved to go to the governing body. With that, I just had a couple items. The city sends several members, including myself, Ms. Kirk's, and Ms. Ewing to the National Planning Conference in Minneapolis. That was held a couple weeks ago. Ms. Ewing or Ms. Kirk's, I'll give you a chance. Is there anything that you would like to say about your experience at the conference?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, it was a wonderful conference. A lot of great information was presented about the missing middle housing, zoning reform. I attended an ethics session to keep up on my continuing education for ethics, a law session, I'm trying to think, a management session. So I attended some really great sessions, met with a lot of planners from across the United States and Canada. And it was a wonderful, Minneapolis was a great host city this year.
Ms. Ewing, anything you would like to add?
It was a great opportunity. Thank you guys so much. I wish to see more commissioners there next year, potentially, so.
It means you have to put more people in the budget, Mark, sorry. This is my third conference, and I will tell you, I, being kind of a planning geek, even though it's not my profession, I do enjoy the conferences. It's a chance to kind of geek out for a couple days with planning people that actually do this for a living. It's amazing the number of people that are there at these conferences. It's, I don't know how many people attend, but like a thousand, or...
This one had four thousand attendees. In 2015, the Seattle one had over eight thousand attendees.
It's just incredible. And they're from all over the country, all over the world, commissioners, planning staff. I spent a lot of time with the Overland Park Planning Commission, and one of our former members of this commission, who's now on the Overland Park Commission, had some time to discuss some events with him that are going on in the area. People on one of my tours were from South Korea. Just, it's a great opportunity to see what the rest of the country is doing from a planning perspective. I'll just share one seminar that I went to. It was Boise, Idaho, and they were basically blowing up their entire zoning book and starting fresh. They were putting cafes in the middle of neighborhoods. They were putting fourplexes next to R1s. I mean, it was just completely, something that wouldn't work here, but for them, it was a great opportunity to just start fresh with new ideas to see how it would work. So it's a very unique experience. With that, let me just say, do we have a work session on May fourteenth?
We would like a work session.
Okay. So that, we'll go back to our regular Tuesday meetings for work session on May fourteenth, and then next regular meeting will be on May twenty-eighth, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So put those on your calendars. Anyone have anything else for the good of the order? Would you like to make a motion in adjournment? Okay. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you at next month. Thank you.